Good evening, City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilman Goldberg, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
May your grace over each aspect of our meeting tonight, give us your guidance as we deliberate this evening's agenda. Bless everyone present tonight with your love and good health. Continue to allow our community, Commonwealth, and nation to be safe and a haven for all nations to emulate. We ask all of this in your holy name, and let us all say, amen.
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
Our resolution certifying the closed meeting of October 5th, 2022 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712 thou therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Motion is in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Goldberg?
Second, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Goldberg. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to approval of the minutes from the April 6, 2022 Work Session and Regular Meeting, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Johnson?
Move for approval.
Motion for approval from Councilman Johnson, Councilman Williams?
Second, Mayor.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to special presentations. We have two this evening, one a proclamation in recognition of Fire Prevention Week, followed by a proclamation in recognition of Cyber Security Awareness Month.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, as the mayor has said, our first proclamation is Fire Prevention Week. It was established in recognition of the fire, the Great Fire of 1870, '71 in Chicago, and I'm looking at the fire chief right now, he's smiling at me. But it is observed during Sunday through Saturday in October, during the week of October 9th. And with that, I will request our fire chief and fire marshal to come to the podium with the mayor.
Madam Clerk, please present the proclamation.
Whereas the City of Suffolk is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all our residents and visitors, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and people are at the greatest risk from fire in their homes, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying by half in those home fires that are reported, and whereas our Suffolk First Responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and related injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas the 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape," effectively reminds us that it is important to have and practice a home fire escape plan. Now therefore I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, do hereby proclaim October 9th, 2022 through October 15th, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week, and encourage all citizens to create their escape plans, practice their plan frequently, and to participate in the many public safety activities sponsored by the Suffolk Fire Marshal's Office. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed this fifth day of October in the year of our Lord 2022.
It's always good to have Dr. Gordon take your picture. That's really impressive by the superintendent. So Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council, thank you so much for this proclamation. For the first six months of 2022, Suffolk Fire Rescue has responded to 9,177 incidents, of which of those incidents, 199 were what we call working fires, when citizens lose property. For the first six months of 2022, over $3.7 million has been lost due to fire in the city. That is why we stand here today. Prevention is a key to fire safety. Our Fire Marshal, Chief Chris Cornwell, will address our prevention efforts to ensure that our citizens are safe from fire. Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Again, good evening, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Honorable Members of Council. Again, thank you for this opportunity to be before you this evening. In expanding the remarks of the Fire Chief, we cannot reiterate enough the importance of having an evacuation plan, and not just having one, but also practicing it and being familiar with it, and ensuring that every member of your family is also familiar with it. It's only as good as the practice and work that you put into it. My second point I really want to drive home is smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, detectors in the home. They're only as good as the work you put into them, and it's an absolute fact, just as seat belts in an automobile save lives on the streets, smoke detectors save lives in the home when they're working. So make sure the batteries in these things work, because it's a fact that they save lives in the home. So it's very important. We have them available, 514-4540. Give us a call, we'll be glad to come and make sure that you have one in your home, the citizens of our great city here. So if anybody has any questions, we'll be glad to address them at any time. Thank you again.
Mr. Manager, provide an overview, please.
Yes, Vice Mayor, members of council, as the mayor had mentioned earlier, our second proclamation is Cyber Security Awareness Month. And with us this evening is the Director of Information and Technology, Dr. Karyaku.
Madam Clerk, please present the proclamation.
Whereas in 2004, the President of the United States and Congress declared October to be Cyber Security Awareness Month in order to help individuals protect themselves online as threats to technology and confidential data became more commonplace. And whereas the Cyber Security and Infrastructure Security Agency, CISA, and the National Cyber Security Alliance, NCA, led a collaborative effort between government and industry to raise cybersecurity awareness nationally and internationally. Whereas this year's campaign theme, "See Yourself in Cyber," demonstrates that everyone is responsible for their own online behavior. Whereas this October will focus on the people part of cybersecurity by providing information and resources to help educate CISA partners and the public, in addition to ensuring all individuals and organizations make smart decisions, whether on the job, at home, or at school. Now therefore I, Michael D. Dooman, Mayor of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, do hereby proclaim October 1st, 2022 through October 31st, 2022, as Cyber Security Awareness Month, and encourage all residents to educate themselves on the fundamentals of cybersecurity in order to keep their online data safe and secure. In witness whereof, here I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Suffolk to be affixed this fifth day of October in the year of our Lord 2022.
All right, thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and thank you for this opportunity to talk about cybersecurity. I'll be very brief on this. There's really four easy ways to protect yourself online. You can enable multi-factor authentication for all important online activities to provide an additional layer of security. Number two, you can use strong passwords, because it can prevent cyber criminals from gaining access to your accounts. Three, recognize and report phishing attacks, which can infect your machine with malware. And four, update software and ensure the most current protection. At CISA's Cyber Security Awareness Month website, www.cisa.gov/cybersecurity-awareness-month, there's basic information, classes, and even online live events happening throughout the month of October. Thank you very much.
At this time, we will consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. If there are any items that members of City Council wish to remove from the consent to be voted on separately, a motion would be appropriate at this time. Councilman Johnson?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remove Item 11 from the consent agenda to be voted on separately under the Agenda Item ordinances, so that we can have further discussion.
Okay, we've got a motion from Councilman Johnson to remove Item 11 for a separate vote. Do we have a second? Councilman Fawcett?
Second the motion.
We have a second from Councilman Fawcett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote.
Excuse me, Mayor, just to have clarification from Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Fawcett, would that motion be and to adopt the remainder of the agenda as presented?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so the motion is to remove Item 11 for a separate vote under ordinances and accept the remainder of the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
All righty, here we go. Madam Clerk, will you please present the items for consideration?
Item number seven, in ordinance to accept and appropriate program income resulting from the repayment of funds associated with the City of Suffolk's Down Payment Assistance Program. Item number eight, in ordinance to accept and appropriate a Creative Communities Partnership Grant Award from the Virginia Commission of the Arts. Item number nine, in ordinance to accept and appropriate a 2022 Port Security Grant from the United States Department of Homeland Security for the Suffolk Police Department. Item number 10, in ordinance to accept and appropriate a fiscal year 2022 Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant from the United States Department of Justice for the Suffolk Police Department. And item number 12, in ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation Economic Development Access Road Program.
Before I ask the manager to provide an overview of the items, I must regress. Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda speakers?
No, Mayor Dooman.
Okay, got that covered. Now we can, Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Okay, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, in regards to Item 7, the city has received $5,520 in home investment partnership program funds repaid to the city by the Suffolk Redevelopment Housing Authority. The funds represent a recapture of previously expended funds provided in support of the city's Suffolk Down Payment Assistance Program due to the sale of a housing unit. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund budget by $5,520, no local match is required. In regards to Item 8, the city has received a $4,500 grant from Creative Communities Partnership Grant Award from the Virginia Commission for the Arts in Support of Local Arts and Cultural Activities through the Suffolk Fine Arts Commission Grant Program. The funding will be used for the FAA triannual inspections, whoops, disregard that last sentence, it would be activities through the Suffolk Fine Arts Commission Grant Program. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund budget by $4,500. A local match of $4,500 is required, which is provided in the adopted FY2223 general fund budget. In regards to Item 9, the city has received $210,988 in funding from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security to enhance resilience and recovery of the City of Suffolk on the waterways within Suffolk and Hampton Roads. The grant will be administered by the Suffolk Police Department and used to purchase a safe boat. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund budget by $210,988. Local match of $70,329 is required and is provided in the adopted FY2223 consolidated grants fund budget. In regards to Item 10, the city has received $20,947.50 from the FY2022 Patrick Leahy Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant from the United States Department of Justice in support of officer safety. The grant will be administered by the Suffolk Police Department, will be used to purchase bulletproof vests for Suffolk police officers. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund budget by $20,947.50. A local match of $20,947.50 is required, which is provided in the adopted FY2223 consolidated grants fund budget. In regards to Item 12, earlier this year, City Council passed a resolution in support of the Virginia Department of Transportation Economic Development Access Road Fund Grant Application. The city's grant application has been approved for funding in the amount of $710,500 to be used for the extension of Enterprise Drive within the Virginia Port Logistics Park. This project supports a new 1.5 million square foot import center known as Project Coastal. The grant will require a $10,500 local match. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the capital projects fund by $721,000. The required local match of $10,500 is available through the transfer from the general fund economic development investment program account. And that concludes the consent agenda.
If there are no questions about the items, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Councilman Fawcett?
I'll move to approve, Mayor.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Can I get a second? Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We now move to public hearings. We do have one public hearing this evening, which is in ordinance granting a license agreement for the non-exclusive right and privilege to occupy and use the streets, alleys, and public places of the City of Suffolk for the purposes of constructing, installing, and maintaining facilities for telecommunications services within the corporate limits of the City of Suffolk. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, at this time- Robert Lewis, Director of Public Works, will provide the staff report.
This is just a routine item where we have a company already licensed in our city that's just asking to have a renewal of their application, and as such, we did not prepare any slides for this, but it's an opportunity for the public to comment, and happy to answer any questions that may arise, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, will you please explain the timing system?
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Do we have anyone who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing no speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel, an ordinance has been presented for consideration, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett, Councilman Williams?
I second it.
Second from Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we now move to ordinances, and we will take up Item number 11, which was previously removed from the consent agenda, which is an ordinance to reappropriate unspent fiscal year 2021, 2022 funds to the fiscal year 2022, 2023 School Operating Fund. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, sir. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, the Suffolk Public Schools has requested the reappropriation of unspent FY2122 funds in the amount of $397,484.75 to their FY2022-23 school operating budget for the purpose of repairing sinkholes discovered at their facilities. The funding consists of additional funds in the amount of $248,736.13 received by the Suffolk Public Schools from the Virginia Department of Education in late June, and previous FY2021 encumbered funds in the amount of $148,748.62 for goods which, due to the supply chain issues, were not received. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the FY2223 schools operating budget by the $397,484.75.
Counsel, an ordinance has been presented for consideration. Questions, comments, or emotion? Councilman Johnson?
Since I'm the one that raised the concern, I'll be the first. You know, I'd welcome anyone else that would like to say something. We fully funded our schools last year. We try to fully fund our schools every year. This is money that was not used, and for several reasons, whatever reasons it might be, but I feel that we have a fiscal responsibility to the citizens of this city. This is their money. We have approved it, and now it's come back to us. Because of the unique world we're living in right now, there's lots of money out there that's probably being, we're having a difficult time spending, because it has to be sent in such short order. We, as a city, have all kinds of expenses coming forward with our schools. We're trying to develop new school offices, there's a shortage. We're trying to build new schools, maintain schools, there's a shortage. I just would like to explore the possibility that rather than just put this money back in the school's general fund, that we actually use it to accomplish some of our goals for the next year. With that being said, there's also, we need to have transparency to our people and to the people of this city, and I still get it day after day after day. And one of the ways we can do this is by making all of the monies that we have sitting around, it hasn't been spent in this past year, apparent to the people, and what we're going to do with it and where it's going to go. And there's been lots of discussion out in the community about different aspects of this. So what I would propose that we do, I'd like to set this aside, I'll read what I've got written here, so that we can, I'll put forth an ordinance. I move that the ordinance be tabled until the November 16th, 2022 City Council meeting, and that the Suffolk Public Schools provide us with an itemized accounting of funds from fiscal year 2021, '22 that were encumbered but not spent as of June 30th, 2022, and identify any encumbered funds by contract that are encumbrance contracts authorized by School Board Resolution Number 21/22-21. The requested information needs to be provided to City Council no later than November 2nd, 2022. This is in no way a criticism of the schools, Mr. Gordon. We respect everything you do, but I think it's a way for us to disclose to the public what's going forward, and hopefully we all of us work together in the future to make sure that our money is being spent appropriately, and that we consider every dollar that we spend. Every dollar is important to the people of this city. And with that, I'd like to put forth this motion if I can get a second. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion from Councilman Johnson to table this until, what day was it, the 22nd?
Yeah.
No.
November 16th.
16th. It would be tabled to the 16th, and further request, if you will, information concerning all encumbered funds categorized in amounts with what they, and then for that report to be brought back on the second. Okay, so that would be the motion. Do we have a second? Councilman Fawcett?
Just a quick comment. I'm noticing the difference between incumbent and unencumbered funds. City Attorney explained, I've never seen the word used in a document, unencumbered funds, where, is this something that exists, or what can you?
So, under the, I can talk about city funds, because that's generally what our office deals with. So, under the city charter, there's a provision that says that at the end of a fiscal year, funds need to be re-appropriated if they have not been spent or encumbered. So, any funds that have not been encumbered, so obligated, those have to be re-appropriated. So that's where encumbered comes from. Under the code section for the school funds, it doesn't use either spent or encumbered, it just says unexpended, which the general definition of unexpended is spent. So there's some question about whether or not the school system has can encumber funds or can't encumber funds. It's hard to tell, because the general somebody hasn't defined that term. But as far as our charter says, our charter says that for city funds, they have to be re-appropriated every year at the end of the fiscal year unless they are spent or encumbered.
Okay, thank you. We've got a motion on the floor, and I believe we're still looking for a second. Do we have a second?
I'll go ahead and second the motion. Let's put it to a vote and see where it goes.
From Councilman Fawcett, is there any further discussion of the motion? I would like to make a comment and also try to, to what Councilman Fawcett was alluded to, the state doesn't, the state code doesn't mention encumbered, but our city code does. So if funds are encumbered, then- So if funds are encumbered, then they stay with the entity, which would be the school system, to pay those bills. My definition of encumbered is that a debt is incurred in one fiscal year, a PO is issued, there's a contractual obligation in one fiscal year, which will be paid for in the following fiscal year. But it does require a contractual obligation along with a PO, if you will, to establish that obligation. And in that case, those funds would be held and paid in the following fiscal year, all other money there. So my, my way of thinking, and I'm not privy to encumbered funds and encumbered, and funds that are encumbered doing to an encumbrance contract. I do not understand the difference between the two. Obviously, there must be a difference, because we established encumbrance contracting. So my way of thinking is that encumbrance contracting does not fall within the traditional sense of encumbrance, which is a set bill for a set amount of money that needs to be paid in the following fiscal year. So I think just an accounting of that would demonstrate to our citizens and ourselves, and just to what Councilman Johnson said, this is no reflection on the school system, but, I mean, it's what we get paid to do. Believe it or not, it's what we get paid to do. You know, we're in charge of the money, we're supposed to be fiscally responsible, we're supposed to be good stewards of our tax money, and to that point, I think this will help clear the air in regards to some issues that not necessarily have come up, but to some questions concerning funding and how money is spent. Just like, I think Council John said, there's a lot of money came in last year, a lot, a lot of money came in last year. CARES money, ARPA money, $25, $28 million. So with all the needs that we have, and a lot of those needs, most of the needs are school needs. I mean, forty-some percent of the CIP went to schools, forty-some percent probably needs to go to schools next year, the year after, the year after, the year after, because there's just not enough money to solve the school, school situation, not only in Suffolk, and believe it or not, we're in a lot better shape than a lot of other localities are. I mean, there's schools in Norfolk, Maury High School is over 100 years old. They still haven't figured out what to do that. Virginia Beach has 100-year-old schools. So we need help from the state, and everybody does. We need help from the state, we need help from the feds to get caught up. But in the meantime, we need to make sure that we are making the most prudent use of the funds that are available. So with that being said, I mean, I support Councilman Johnson's motion. I don't know if there's any other, oh, Councilman Goldberg has a comment?
Yes, Mayor. Got a question. The $397,000 was appropriated earlier, and it was saved, I guess, from a contract or something where the money came from. I don't know where that came from, but whatever, it seems to me that we've done this before of giving the money back, so, and they have an issue here of sinkholes that are out there that need to be fixed. So, I mean, you're knowing where this money is going, they're saying it to us, so that's my only comment. I see where the money is going. Thank you, Mayor.
Council, any other, let me see. Councilman Johnson?
I'll just make one more comment, because this is where this all came from in my head, was the sinkholes, Mr. Gordon will tell you too, are going to be fixed. Money's been appropriated to fix the sinkholes, and I'm not asking that of him, but I know it has been appropriated to be fixed, so.
No, wait.
But the point is, once we know what encumbered, what funds are there that haven't been spoken for yet, is there a need to do that? Or would it not be better to take this money and put it toward the new administration building? We need to work as partners in this thing, and that's my concern, that if the money is there and it's not needed for something, why can't we use it in a different way? I'd like to see the school system and our board and the council start working on better terms as far as the way we do things, and that means we work together. And if this money's not needed to fix those sinkholes, which they, it says they can use it to fix sinkholes, no problem. I just question, I'm sorry, what the best use of the funding is, and the citizens have that right to know as well. And we've kind of put this building on hold a little bit because we're looking for the funds to do it, so why don't we try to find the funds to do it? And this is one way to do that. My concern is just, just because we did it like this yesterday, tomorrow's a new day, and why can't we do a better job as a city and as a school system? Just my opinion, I'm sorry. And that's why I asked for this, so that we can consider it, have, in front of us what's going forward, and.
Councilman Fawcett?
I just wanted to make one observation. I think when, what you were talking about, Mr. Goldberg, too, is when we last appropriated some funding, it was for the purpose of sinkholes. So this is continuously coming in front of us with sinkholes. I'm not opposed to them getting the 400, roughly almost 400,000. By taking this and getting the information we want doesn't mean that they're not going to get the $400,000. It just gives us an opportunity to see what's going on with the funding that we can't see because I'm seeing the sinkhole thing come up too many times, you know? And there's always going to be needs in our school system, we know that. They're always outlining always a lot of issues to need funding for, but I think in this case, all we're asking for today is for what Councilman Johnson has outlined, and to get clarity on the encumbered, encumbered forms, funds, and so on and so forth, where those particular funds are headed. If they're going into sinkhole, they're going into sinkhole. If they're going into sinkhole, we'll give it to them later to go into sinkhole. Sinkhole ain't going anywhere, because we still have the same sinkholes we had a few months ago. So I just wanted to make that observation.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Thank you, Mayor. I request that Superintendent Mr. Gordon came up and explained to the council exactly the request and about the sinkholes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Bennett, Mayor, City Council members. We definitely want to provide some clarification to this request, because it seems to be some misinformation out there. I actually sent the city manager today a list of the big picture items that included the $6.8 million in encumbered funds that we have, including $1.8 million for turf fields, approximately $1.5 million in school buses, $500,000 for actual sinkhole repair, $150,000 for a scope for Kings Fork High School. That was before the sinkhole that we actually discovered at Kings Fork High School last year, last week, I'm sorry. So we do have a list that I understand has been shared with the city manager that I sent him earlier today. This money that we're asking for is because we know that the sinkholes are going to continue. We have not had to replace or repair one sinkhole twice. The issue is that the sinkholes have continued to occur. We have spent $1.8 million, $1.8 million in sinkholes in the last year. And I think we all can understand that with the last five to six days worth of rain that we have, there's a high probability that other sinkholes will be discovered, not including the one that we just discovered in the parking lot of Kings Fork High School last week. So this is a safety issue for money that we already know that's been appropriated. We are trying to do everything that we can to answer any additional questions that the city manager may have, that you all, as City Council members, may have. The $6.8 million that we have in encumbered funds are because of supply chain issues. It has taken us several months. I would use the field at Lakeland High School, for example, as an example, where that project normally would have taken five months, but took eight months because of supply chain issues. And these are some of the things that we're looking at that are going over multiple fiscal years. So it's not about us asking for any additional money. We have no problem in being transparent with the council or with anyone that ever asks us the question. But I do want to make sure that we're clear in saying that playgrounds at our elementary schools, Macbin, Oakland, these are some of the other encumbered funds that we have on the list. A delay in this also means a delay in us getting these projects completed, and we've already had to wait for some of these projects to be completed because of supply chain issues. And I do not want to take these, this opportunity out of our kids' hands any longer. So that's a general overview. I also have our chief financial officer, Wendy Forzeman, here, who can ask more specific details on those encumbered funds. To thank you all for the opportunity.
Thank you. Dr. Gordon, you want to stay up there for a minute? Does anyone else in the council have any questions from Dr. Gordon while he's at the podium? Okay, I'm sorry. Councilman Ward?
Dr. Gordon, you said you just got them figures today, or so you talked to the city manager today?
Yes, I sent those, the big picture items to the city manager today.
Let me ask this question. Was any reason for, we couldn't get it early before this came out or something?
As soon as I got the information that City Council had questions about it is when I sent it. At any point in time, if the City Council would have requested it, we wouldn't have had any problem. I literally talked to the city manager, made a phone call to Ms. Forzeman, our chief financial officer, sent him the information 15 minutes later.
Okay, go back again, I want to make sure. So you, so when you heard about the city council getting it, when did you hear about that?
I heard there were concerns about the 400,000 in the reappropriation today.
When? I'm saying, when?
Probably around 12, 12:30.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
I can probably help me and clear one more thing up. When I hear encumbrance contracts, the thing that your school board talked about back on 21-22-21, explain that to us. See, I don't, I, nobody has explained that to me whatsoever. And what I'm asking for here, guys, honestly, I love the schools, but I want to understand, and I think the public wants to understand, that's, when I hear it from the public over and over, we got to be better. I mean, we need to let them know where the money's going, why the money's sitting there and not being spent, and that's all I'm asking, and that's why I brought this up tonight, because I'm, I think we all need to do a better job of keeping the citizens informed. I'm sorry, Wendy, go ahead.
No, that's okay. An encumbrance, much like the city, they may have a contract with a supplier or service provider, and they enter into a contract, they issue a purchase order that obligates funds that they plan to spend. That's exactly what we've done.
Is that the same, is that part of the $6 million?
That is every penny of that $6 million.
Oh, that's the $6 million.
Absolutely. Every single one is a contract and an issued purchase order for goods or services.
Okay. That's what I didn't understand, though, and I, that's why I'm asking you, because I need to understand, and the public needs to understand. And I'd like to go back to just two minutes with y'all standing there. Do you think it's a terrible thing to take this money if we don't have it already used and use it to promote these buildings that we need to move forward on, because we are struggling to find that money?
Well, you've got to understand that these sinkholes have all been emergency repairs. We're only repairing them now because we're finding they're under our parking lots, they're right next to our fields where kids are playing soccer and field hockey and things like this. We had one that was the size of a bus, a school bus. These are safety hazards for the public and for people using our facilities. And so we don't ask, we didn't ask for this in our budget, because obviously this is emergency. We didn't know these were going to happen. And so we've spent over the 500,000 that Dr. Gordon referred to as one of the large ticket items, we'd set that aside because the end of June, already, we had over $300,000 worth of quotes for repairs on sinkholes. So we knew we were going to spend it. Now, we've spent an additional $378,000 in sinkhole quotes, we've got quotes for $378,000 right this minute, without the rain that we've just had. So we know these are occurring, and that's why we were asking, because this is not in the budget anywhere, it's not part of any of our plan to fix anything, and we have to do them, and we have to take money from someplace else if we don't use it for this.
I understand that, and they've got to be fixed, I don't question it, but since nobody's stopping me, I'm going to ask you another question. We had, did we, couldn't we go back on the contractors, the engineers that designed all these things, and?
10, 12, 20 years after a school's built, you have no records.
Kings Fork's not that old, I mean, it's.
Yes, 2005.
Is it that old?
Yeah, 2005.
Holy moly, I'm getting old. Okay, that's my concern, though, is that the responsibility should actually go back to the original contractor, but.
It's way, way past that.
It doesn't work that way. Okay. All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Thank you all, you answered my questions, and I know it's for the safety of our children. So that's the key to it, I think, of all, is we want to make sure our children are safe. Thank you.
If I may make one more comment, please. In May, we go to the board every year with a resolution that we ask the school board to approve very specific items for us to finish our year out if there is funding. So in other words, if I finish the year and there's a half a million dollars, may I spend it on these particular items? And the board approves those items very specifically. I mean, they are very specific, if you pull that resolution in May. Then when we go back to them in September, we show them the results of the spending in every category, every program that we have. So it is very clear exactly where we're spending that money. I just want to make sure everybody understands that. It's very clear. It'll tell you right on that resolution, anything and everything we had planned to do if there was a dime.
Okay, I just, does anyone else have any questions? Oh, Councilman Goldberg, you were still rolling over here. Okay, Councilman Goldberg.
No question there at all, thank you all very much. You've answered it fully for me. I would offer a substitute motion. Are we ready for that?
Yeah, you can make a substitute motion anytime.
That's what I'm saying. I like a substitute motion that we go ahead and approve this tonight and give them, give the money to them.
Councilman Goldberg has made a substitute motion for approval. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Council, actually, Councilman Williams is up next, but, okay.
I second it.
Vice Mayor Bennett? Or did you second?
I second it, that's why.
Okay, Councilman Williams seconded. Okay, so we now have a substitute motion to approve the ordinance as presented, and by Councilman Goldberg, and a second by Vice Mayor Bennett. Before we vote, can I get Superintendent Ms. Forzeman back up here? I'm sorry, I had a couple of questions. I might go let y'all fed easy. Yes. Oh, second by Councilman Williams, I'm sorry. Thank you for straightening me out. You tried, my bad. Being that, we all understand that encumbered funds are not subject to being returned to the city, never have been. Our city policy has always been the schools obviously spent what they spent, and they can keep funds for encumbrance purposes. With that being said, and with that being understood, and with that being the norm and as it has been for years and rears, years, what was the need to pass another ordinance to create something called encumbrance contracting, which I have yet to find a definition of in any financial guidebook of any type? Why, what was the impetus behind creating encumbrance contracting? And specifically, what is encumbrance contracting? Because contracting is contracting. So explain to me the difference and why that resolution was passed in June.
I'm sorry, I don't know what the resolution is talking about.
Explain what the definition of encumbered contracts is.
Okay, when encumbrance is a contract, basically, with the city or the schools. I'm not sure what you're referring to, because I'm not sure.
I'm referring to Resolution Number 21/22-21, Resolution, Suffolk School Board for the City of Suffolk, Virginia, granting the school superintendent the authority to obligate through encumbrance contracting any remaining appropriated funds before the end of the current fiscal year, June 30th, 2022, for certain designated repair and/or purchasing needs of Suffolk Public Schools. So I do not see the need for this resolution. You have given the superintendent the ability to incur debts, and if they are indeed contracted, obligated before July 1st, then they would require encumbered funds without this. I don't understand what the purpose of this is.
Is that the one, if you look at the end, sir, that has the details of how we would spend it? I'm not sure if that is.
This is a resolution that you passed in June, and the last paragraph of that resolution says, "Be it further resolved that at the school board's next regularly scheduled meeting of September 8th, 2022, the school superintendent shall report to the school board all end-of-the-year expenditures made pursuant to this grant of authority." I watched the entire September 8th, 2022 meeting, and I did not see any presentation of what that money was being spent for. I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, I watched all three hours and some change with a little bit of fast forward. There was no presentation at the time, but I still do not understand the necessity to pass a resolution that covers encumbered. to pass a resolution that covers encumbered funds if it's nothing outside the normal, traditional, what we've been doing for years, encumbering, unless, and I'm just going to put my what-if hat on, encumbered to me means that, that PO, that obligation is made before July 1st.
Absolutely.
So, bottom line is, if, as far as I'm concerned, if you come back to me and all these obligations, all these expenditures, this $6.8 million, you know, which includes some pretty, won't get into specifics, but there's a lot of money being spent on some other things other than sinkholes.
Yes, sir.
And if all these have a contractual obligation committed before July 1st, then fine, keep it all. I really don't care about the $300,000 at this point, I mean, it doesn't make any difference. I think what we're looking for is that accounting, and that accounting that we can provide to our citizens, and as Mr. Johnson alluded to, that our citizens know that we are looking out for their best interest in getting the answers to these questions. You know, we are always in a bad situation when it comes to budgets in schools at budget time. By code, we have to provide you with a dollar amount by May 15th. Well, short of a lack of a better term, that sucks, because May 15th, we've got to come up with a budget. You're still getting money from May 15th to July 1st. This year was a lot of money. There's nothing we can do about it. Once that money is appropriated, you get to keep it all. We don't get another shot at saying, hey, we fully funded you, plus you got another $8 million. We would like to have some of that money back. We cannot do that, and I understand that. But at the same time, when we're looking at these expenditures, I truly believe if some of these expenditures were contained within the original budget, that full funding might not have happened. I mean, I'm not sure everybody's really crazy about $1.8 million worth astroturf. Maybe they are. But what I'm saying is, this council doesn't have an opportunity to look at that. So at this point, the only thing that I want to clarify, and it's just, I'm kind of a rational person, I do not understand encumbered contracting.
Okay, I don't know why that term was used together like that. It is one or the other, or a slash should have been there. I don't write those, sir, so I'm sorry, I can't answer that particular why it was written down.
Okay, and that's fine, it may just be...
I do want to say this, though. Our financial system is set up with audit controls. We are not allowed to, in the system, to encumber anything after June 30th.
And that's fine.
If we've encumbered it, we have to have a vendor, a specific vendor, and a specific amount. If we vary from that at all, let's say we get into August and suddenly that vendor can't supply that, we have to give that money back to the city. We are not allowed to change the vendor, we are not allowed to change amounts, we're not allowed to change contracts, nothing changes if something changes after June 30th. We are not allowed, the system will not allow us to do it, we have to void that PO, put the money aside to send back to the city.
Okay.
So that's one of the sets of money that we talked about, the $140,000.
And that's fine, if that's the way it is and it comes back...
And it's very closely monitored, not only by us, I monitor that personally every single month, every single payment that goes out, how it goes out, is it the right thing? Is it on the PO as part of the contract that they did, by one thing they shouldn't have purchased on that particular PO? And I provide the auditors with a full list of it every year to show all the payments so they can monitor it and make sure that I'm in compliance. And every year that I've been here for 12 years, we've been in compliance. I take it very seriously, I do not spend money I do not have. When the state miscalculated their sales tax in June and didn't tell us until the 24th, after all the bodies had already met for the month of June, I had no choice but to say, I can't spend that money, it wasn't appropriated through the city to me, which is why we sent the letter asking for it to be re-appropriated. I had no opportunity to spend that money or obligate that money whatsoever under contract because it wasn't mine to spend. I can't do what I haven't been appropriated by the city. And so, that was above and beyond, I had no control over it, it was the state's miscalculation of sales tax. And therefore, I had to put it aside, say it was due to the city, and then come to the city and ask for it back. That's the rules, and I follow the rules very carefully. I have a license to protect.
Okay, council, one more shot at it. Councilman Fawcett?
I just had one question. Dr. Gordon stated he had sent the itemized list of funds this afternoon prior to this council meeting, which was somewhere after noon time today, Dr. Gordon?
Yes, and it wasn't, Mr. Fawcett, it wasn't all the funds. I sent Mr. Moore the big picture items, those being that they cost $100,000 or more.
I'm just curious, because I've never seen that. If it was provided, I'm wondering why it wasn't provided to me or any other council member here. It was not provided to us, this would have probably helped us tonight, having that information. Therefore, I'm a little dissatisfied with the fact that I didn't get that information. This is unacceptable.
That's what we're asking for. Councilman Ward?
You're saying this money mostly going to go to sinkholes?
All of it will go to sinkholes.
All go to sinkholes.
Because we had more than 100, more than $300,000 above the 500 I put aside because I had quotes already before June 30th for those items. They had to start ordering the items before June 30th, but I've had quite a bit of sinkholes already, and with this rain, we know we're going to have more.
And Mr. Ward, we also have already spent, again, $1.8 million on sinkholes. I just want to reiterate that last year.
I'm like Councilman Fawcett, it bothers me that we just heard of it, and we have to make decisions now. Been on council, and we've been asking, the school board president, you, and the city manager have a better communication somehow. I mean, I know you, but I'm just saying for, you just found out, we just found out, I just found out really today, I think it's unfair for any questions, because I, for you to come up, for us to have to come up here and do this on TV, that we could have done this, and we wouldn't even have had to come up here and talk about this. And by being up here, you know, one of the few things that we had last council meeting is when the school board and the council seemed to people who's looking that we ain't getting along, or we, that's the word come out, you know what I'm saying? Let's be frank, and it's not, we not about that. So for you to come up and say, that's why I asked that question, 12:30, you just found out, I think it's big that, this is important, because we got to act, we got to do this in front of, this is important. So I don't know where the ball was dropped at, but here we go again. I wish we have a better communication. I mean, where you sending your money? We not going to be charged by it. We, once we get the money to you, that's up to y'all to do what y'all, if y'all do right, it's not council.
Councilman Johnson?
All right, I'll put my button on one more time, because my motion is basically null and void because it was Mr. Goldberg put forth in the motion, which I don't really have a problem...
No, your motion's still on the table, we just got to vote on his.
But we're going to vote on his motion, and that very likely will can my motion, which is fine. My whole point being, this is not, for me, it wasn't just about the $400,000. I have no problem with fixing the sinkholes. My good comrade over here just said what the problem is. We don't know what we're doing, and we don't talk. We need to know these things. The citizens need to know, if we don't know these things, the citizens don't know these things. My goal for the next four years, and I told Dr. Gordon this morning when I talked to you, didn't I? We got to stop this. We have got to start communicating better. We need to know what's going on in the schools, we need to know how we're spending all this COVID money, we need to know how it's pushing our system to the next level and getting us ahead. That's my concern. My concern is that we're unable to build an office building for you guys because we need more money, and that it's just not there, you can only go so far with it. So at some point, I'd like to see us all get on the same page. And I'm not criticizing anybody, Ms. Forsman, I know you do a great job, that's not the question, the question is, we are not communicating.
I will say this...
Pardon me?
Councilman Johnson, I will say this, on our website has every single penny that we've spent on anything we've received COVID money.
Oh, I...
And it tells you every single line, every single check number that has spent on it, and it's updated monthly, so anyone...
But you know, Ms. Forsman, we don't look at that all the time, because we hardly have time to do what we do here. So we need to have a cheat sheet, and we need to understand exactly why people are asking us questions. And that was my only, that's my only point in doing this, is because I, you know, I'll vote in favor of giving you the money, I don't have a problem with that, but I do have a problem with the fact that we've got to start communicating, and the public expects it. I'm just telling you. So, that's where I stand, and I, it's fine, and we'll figure out a way to build that building, but this is, anytime we have money that we are not putting to the best use, I got a problem with it. So that's my point in this $100,000. We need to put it to the best use, and granted, that might be sinkholes right now if there are no other funds available. But I would ask that you would please make sure that when we have encumbered funds like this, that we are aware of what they are. Can we do that?
We don't have a problem with that.
I know you don't, Dr. Gordon, I'm just saying that that's what this is about, so, and hopefully in the future, we'll be a little less formal in the way we do things and we can talk. So, but with that, I'll vote in favor of it, but I'm just saying, I want to see, I want to see a different approach to all of these things. Thank you.
Councilman Williams, did you want to speak?
Yes. Okay, we, we understand that this money is going to be used specifically for the sinkhole. I guess my question is, for clarity, you made a statement that this money was due to miscalculation of taxes by the state. So that, this is how this money was created, this is where it came from. So it had nothing to do with your budget, it was just a mistake on the state's part which caused this to come back to you and to bring it back to us. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Council, any other questions or comments before we vote? Councilman Goldberg?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
No, not so lucky. Hold on, let me turn your, wait.
All right, diggle. All right. In coming to the city tonight and bringing this to us, you followed the city's procedures in getting here and giving us the information. You didn't hold anything back, you brought it to us tonight as a scheduled meeting to talk about this, correct?
Yes, and that's part of the reason why we were here after I got the information later on, and why I had conversations with many of you all today, but also why the information was sent, to make sure we can answer any questions that you all may have.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, I got one comment, then I'm going to call for the vote. And my comment is, this is, you're exactly right, this is not about the $300,000. It's about accountability. So all I'm asking for is accountability. I still don't understand the resolution that you passed and why there was a need to pass an ordinance in regards to encumbrance contracting. Maybe there's nothing to it, maybe there's anything else better to do, but it's there. And to me, that sends up a red flag, that this was created because what existed was not enough to do whatever it is with the $6.8 million that we've encumbered over and above the budget. So, I'm 100% with it, once the information comes back, and that information is specifically what was contracted, when, and for how much. And if everything's exactly like you said, I get no issue with it. But people have been screaming for years about accountability, and we talk the talk, but we don't walk the walk. I mean, we ask, and I mean, I'm just telling you, there's not that much served. You know, this, we should have had this discussion before, before this money was spent, just like Councilman Johnson said, you know, we're $3 million short on your administrative building, is that right? We're about $3 million short? Three and a half million short. Well, why wasn't there a conversation before the $6.8 million was spent? I mean, I'm just saying, why didn't we have a conversation? Why didn't the superintendent have a conversation with the manager and say, look, I know you're $3.5 million short on our administrative center, we got $6.8 million. I can find a place for it, but maybe a better place would be to help you out, but not help you out, help you help us, because it's going to go back to the school system. I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm thinking out loud. So, that's all I'm going to say. We've got a motion on the floor, the motion, you can't call for the motion without a vote, so just wait, we'll be calling for the motion when I finish. There's a motion on the floor for approval from Councilman Goldberg, seconded by Councilman Williams. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote.
And what are we voting on?
We are voting on approval. That's the substitute motion was to approve the ordinance as presented by Councilman Goldberg, seconded by Councilman Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to one, with Mayor Doeman voting in opposition.
As usual, okay. All righty, moving right along, our next item is... What is our next item? Our next item is a staff report. Guess who's up? 2023 Legislative Agenda. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, over the past couple of months, staff has been working with our legislative consultant, Access Point Public Affairs, to develop the upcoming 2023 Legislative Agenda. Their efforts is also including working closely through the HRPDC on regional issues. This evening, we'll review the draft legislation agenda with city council and allow you time to provide us your comments and input. It's anticipated that the proposed 2023 Legislative Agenda will be on your upcoming agenda for adoption. At this time, with us this evening is Mindy Carlin and Emily Reynolds of Access Point.
Thanks so much. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of city council, it's good to see all of you tonight. I have to say, I was very disappointed not being able to attend the General Assembly update that we, that Mindy provided, and she did a fabulous job, but it's good to see all of you this evening and be able to provide the 2023 Legislative Update for the agenda. I will say that, looking ahead, we are excited to provide that. And this year, we were able to attend several meetings with department heads to not only meet in a collaborative fashion, but also to hear firsthand the priorities of each of the departments and the reason for those. It helps us better represent you guys and also advocate on behalf of the city. So with that, I'm going to pass it to Mindy, she's going to go over some public safety items, finance, tax regulations, and then I'll be taking over for the rest.
Thank you again, Mindy Carlin. I'm president of Access Point and glad to be here to talk about your proposed draft program. So, first up, and front and center in our priorities that we're recommended, recommending at this time is public safety. And included are a number of things that were in last year's agenda, as well as several new ones. So first up, we want to continue to protect qualified and sovereign immunity for law enforcement officials. Second, this is a new item, we are going to be requesting increased flexibility for law enforcement officers, oh, it's right in front of me, I'm looking up there, increased flexibility for law enforcement officers, allowing them to continue to provide full-time duties with respect to public safety after they've retired. And so, an example might be serving as a school resource officer after they've retired without any issues with VRS. So we'll be seeking authorization for that, or recommending that we seek authorization for that pending your approval. Also, in the area of mental health, there are two items related to mental health and public safety. The first is to provide increased support for law enforcement and public safety officials in their management and dealing with individuals who are in mental health crises and dealing with mental health challenges. And this is particularly, a particularly big deal with respect to transportation and TDOs and ECOs, and so we'll be looking at a number of strategies to provide flexibility to reduce the role of officers with respect to transportation. But in addition, we receive feedback that we really believe that the time is now to pursue a more comprehensive strategy for law enforcement officials, not just in the city, but the region, and really the Commonwealth, at how to ensure that our public safety officials are supported and have the tools that they need when they're dealing with mental health issues with those in the community. And so, we'll be exploring strategies to support that, or recommending that we pursue strategies to support that. strategies to support that. But also important in mental health is providing support to our public safety officials themselves, who are often experiencing traumatic situations in the course of doing their jobs and ensuring that they have the support needed through either training or, or other types of support to help them take care of themselves and be able to, to manage that additional stress and trauma that they encounter. And so we'll be seeking additional funding that can help to support that type of support for officers, excuse me, for public safety officials. And then finally, in the public safety arena, we're recommending restoration of authority for our public safety officials to conduct public safety stops. And so what we heard from the, the department was that there is a, there's a real benefit to having that flexibility to make those stops as they are working to combat, combat the, the serious crime that you're seeing increases in our community here in Suffolk throughout, throughout the city. So having that ability to pull someone over for these public safety related issues can really be a vital tool and we want to restore that authority. Wrong way. Shifting to finance and regulatory proposals. So we will be seeking protections for all existing local tax authority. So with this, we would be in opposition to any repeal or restriction of the B-Pole tax, the local option grocery tax, which of course, the state portion of that was repealed. And we understand there may be a move afoot to take away the local portion of that as well. We would want to protect that without any suitable replacement for that revenue and any other local tax to ensure that the fiscal constraints on the city are not diminished or not increased. Second, in the finance arena, we will be seeking protection and preservation of the historic preservation tax credit. This has been a program that the city has benefited from already, and so we want to make sure that this initiative can continue. And then finally, in the regulatory arena, we'll continue to oppose unfunded or underfunded mandates that would further place strains, both fiscally, from a resource standpoint on the city, without appropriate resources to enable you to, to implement those mandates. So I'm going to turn it back to Emily to take us to transportation.
So moving along to the transportation legislative agenda priorities. The first item you'll see on here is the Hazelwood-Godwin Bridge Safety Expansion. We know that bridges see over 30,000 vehicles in a single day. Needed expansion of these bridges stand to affect neighboring localities. So the price tag on this expected bridge expansion costs about 75 million. The next transportation item on this is the Route 460 Corridor Infrastructure Improvements. We recognize the need for infrastructure improvements, and so we will be seeking support from the General Assembly delegation and the Port of Virginia in realizing this vital evacuation routes improvement. As shown in this slide, we are looking at $30.1 million that would be necessary to fund the first phase of this project, which would cover the cost of right-of-way acquisition as well as the relocation of utilities. Next is the Route 58 Infrastructure Improvements. This is a vital route for hurricane evacuation and the Port of Virginia Transportation. Actually, the, the HRP, TPO rated Route 58 as the third heaviest truck corridor in Hampton Roads. So that's pretty significant. The goal is to seek funding for safety improvements or a limited access Route 58 study. Next on the list is the rail safety grade separation. You'll actually notice a name change on this from past years. It was formerly known as the Commonwealth Railline Relocation. Through our conversations, it was discovered that we, we could miss out on federal funding opportunities just because of the title in which it was named. So the city is requesting funding allocation to aid in the Commonwealth Railline separation from VA 164, which leads directly to the Port of Virginia. Also on here, the city has over 40 rail crossings associated with this line, and many of these crossings travel over busy roadways, creating significant safety issues. For several years, moving along, for several years, we have had the King's Highway Bridge replacement funding. The request would be funding for preliminary engineering to begin the replacement of this necessary bridge that ties the western and northern parts of the city over the Nansman River. The next item is a new one listed, and that is the Amtrak Passenger Train Station Study. The city wants to host Amtrak in the historic downtown area to provide western tidewater and northeastern North Carolina with a greater opportunity of public transit access. We request funding to conduct a feasibility as well as a siting study. Future phase shoulders, hill, road infrastructure improvements. There's been consistent growth in the Route 17 corridor, requiring additional widening to provide a safe and efficient link throughout the city. Next is the channel dredging, which we've seen before, the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And the city worked to preserve the navigability of the city's waterways, and the funding is necessary to complete various projects with a combined cost of approximately its $1 million per event. The last transportation item is the evacuation route formula consideration. The city's roadways, roadways serve as the main artery of South Side Hampton Roads's evacuation routes. As such, the city believes consideration of this factor should be included in the state funding formulas such as SmartScale. So moving along, we have the community development and planning. The first item on here is the city requests increased flexibility with public notice requirements. The flexibility would be needed in code section. It's 15.2-107.1, and that is with public notice requirements to reduce the cost to the city for lengthy written notices published in local publications while also maintaining the transparency through other communications methods, such as the social media, the city's website, and then also other electronic communications. I think that this is telling right here, complying with these requirements costs the city approximately $86,000 just for the fiscal year 2022 alone. Through discussions with the HRPDC, as well as other several localities, we plan to be supportive of this language should you approve this. The next one is increased penalties for zoning violations. The city supports increased civil penalties for these violations to better handle them of repeat offenders. Common recurring violations can include parking boats, RVs on property frontage, lack of compliance with required property maintenance, and also housing items defined as junk on the property. Increasing these penalties for these zoning violations stand to further deter offenders who repeatedly receive these citations. The next one on here is the protection and request to increase funding for the African-American cemeteries. Last year proved a success where the goal was to expand access to funds to maintain the historical African-American cemeteries. In addition to that expanded language that was successful, there was also language in the budget that provided an additional $100,000 per year in fiscal year 2023 and fiscal year 2024 for the program. I will say that the city is currently gathering information and putting together the application to apply for this funding opportunity. But again, we are looking to protect it, but then also increase the funding that goes towards that. The last two are the city opposes any legislation that diminishes the city's authority with respect to eminent domain and public rights of way. And then finally, the city supports maintenance of all local authority on local land use decisions. Briefly, I'll, the next topic is the environment and utilities. The city wants to maintain existing water-related fees and oppose any legislation that would impose higher waterworks operation fees or higher groundwater withdrawal permitting fees. Next, the city continues to support the General Assembly's decision to refuse the creation of exemptions from local stormwater utility fees for special interest groups and/or industries. The next one is the city supports increased funding for the rehabilitation of the high-hazard potential dams grant program to enable... Making sure I'm not setting anything off over here.
Almost done, I promise.
Yeah, wrapping up. But these, that grant program will enable improvements to the Godwin's Mill Pond Dam to increase reliability and serviceability of this water supply dam and also to protect Route 10 as an evacuation route. Recently, the city received a grant for the purchase of two electric buses. Additional funding will enable the city to increase the number of low emission vehicles in its transit fleet. So this is definitely something on our radar. The city also requests funding to assist in the development of electric charging stations on city property and also throughout the city, especially as the use of electric vehicles increases. The city wants to ensure the charging infrastructure is there in place to meet the needs of the citizens. So as we wrap up the legislative agenda priorities, we just want to make sure that we are supportive of many organizational and regional initiatives that are in line with the city of Suffolk. Some include HRPDC, the Virginia Association of Chiefs of Police and Foundation, the Virginia State Fire Chiefs Association. And again, all of these are as it pertains to the city of Suffolk. We also threw in language here where we support the state funding request for Jefferson's Labs High Performance Data Facility. This is to enhance ongoing investments in the tech talent pipeline. So with that, this completes our, our presentation to you all and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation, counsel. Questions, comments? Councilperson Butler Barlow.
Thank you for your report. It's great to see all the different things that you're working on, and we all greatly appreciate the efforts that you make on behalf of the city. I just want to make, this is nothing to you all, this is just a statement. I would just like to make a note of the fact that this is a legislative agenda for the city of Suffolk for 2023, and under transportation, the Port of Virginia is mentioned nine times. And that concerns me because this is supposed to be for Suffolk. And I recognize that we are part of a regional area and that the connectivity between all of our different areas in the region is important, but the fact that the Port of Virginia is mentioned nine times just causes me some concern. And that was my comment.
Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Councilman Johnson?
He went first, but that's okay. And I'm, I'm going to piggyback off of what she just said. It's really not necessary. This is about Suffolk and about the city of Suffolk, and hopefully we can generate funds because we are in line with the port. And I know that's what your goal is here, but our people don't always see it that way. So it needs to be about what's in the best interest of our city. And my major concern with all of this is, in all honesty, is the hurricane evacuation routes. I'm glad to see you're going to approach SmartScale funding. That's great, and they need to recognize that. But here we are getting ready to start seeking funds for 460, $30 million, when we haven't finished 58. So, you know, my point being, we need to finish some things before we start kickstarting something, because I can assure you, the state is not going to come up with 450 million it needs to complete 460. But they can come up with another 60 or 80 million for us to complete 58 to Holland. And from Holland forward, it's fine. And, you know, we just keep overlooking that because we keep thinking the state is going to come through and give us a bypass. But let's be realistic. It's probably not going to happen, and I'm not willing to keep waiting. I think it's time that we start expressing to the state that we've got a road that needs major work and they need to be a part of it. And I know that's not altogether your yard because our staff might feel differently, but from my perspective, I live on 58, I have a lot of people on 58. We're tired of a tired road. It's a 1950s road that does not get the care it should, and we don't want million-dollar fixes anymore. We want it fixed. So I'm just expressing my opinion to you, and I'm the only one up here probably really is going to express that because that's my road and it's really, but it's important to the state, in my opinion. The other thing, and this is the other thing that I think should be the top of your transportation, transportation list. If you read the paper today, it states that the Port of Virginia, we'll say that word again, is getting ready to put lots and lots of money put into the rails. That's what's up. And so our rails in Suffolk are miserable. We have got so many, you know, you sit at the rail for 20 minutes every, all through the city. And what you did put on there was very true, 40 rail crossings. We got to do something. We got to stop putting it off, and we've got to start recognizing how we can fix every single rail crossing. So to me, that is probably as vital as anything else. And I'd like to see it get the emphasis in the state that it should. King's Highway Bridge didn't show up on my copy, but I like, I'm glad to hear you say that's going to start, but that'll be way down the road, I'm afraid. The other thing under utilities and environment, water-related fees that the state is trying to really up us on, you got to push hard because we cannot, as a city, have that. We need those fees kept in check, and some of them are really out of sorts. So I would just encourage you to really make sure that they, they get, you know, we can't do that, and look after our people as well. Otherwise, you did a good job. It's a good report. I'm sure there's more you can add to it as people think of things. But the road projects, to me, are important, and I just want to make sure that the state understands that we have got to get our roads fixed, not only for us, but for the state. I hope there's no evacuation today because 58, you wouldn't get them through there. We've got three more years of finishing a project, and we need to make sure we can get people out of tidewater. So, thank you.
Noted, thank you.
Thank you.
And if I could just note, Mr. Mayor, if I may, on the, the rail safety, you know, we are working with city staff to try to prioritize those crossings because there are a lot, there are 40, and, and so in order to really move the ball forward and to start to chip away at some of those projects, need some help in kind of evaluating kind of where, where the priority should be placed. And we're very hopeful that with kind of the use of appropriate terminology, that we may have flexibility to pursue federal funding as well as state funding, because we recognize it's a really important priority.
We appreciate that, and I hope that you're also looking at our downtown area, where we grew up next to huge, huge, all of the city, but... Area, where we've got rail crossings are killing us.
Yes, sir.
So hopefully that's going to be forefront. Thank you.
Councilman Williams?
Yes, as usual, great presentation. I do have a question as it relates to the finance regulations, specifically underfunded mandates and underfunded mandates. Can you give me an example of that? What do you, what do you mean by that?
Sure. You know, an example, I mean, broadly, an unfunded mandate is when a law passes telling you that you need to do something that is going to cost you money to do it without giving you the resources to be able to do that. So say you are required to provide a certain type of training, cooking classes, to all of your employees, which are going to cost X, Y, and Z, and yet without resources to be able to pay for that training or those classes. So it's, it's kind of a general catch-all to ensure that we are protecting you that as a Dillon Rule state, of course, the state gets, you have to ask the state for everything that you can do, and the state can dictate kind of the way localities operate. And so we want to ensure that we are watching out for any new laws or requirements or regulations without the appropriate resources with them so that you're able to implement them without it being at an additional cost at the local level.
And just to piggyback off that, if I may, again, this is just, we kept the language very, very broad so that if anything comes up at the General Assembly, this language can protect us so that we are able to go in and oppose this for, on behalf of the city. So.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Ward?
Yes, yes. Good presentation. You addressed a lot of good projects, but I just want to give you kudos on the protection of increasing funding of historic African-American cemeteries. Get as much as you can, way overdue. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Vice Mayor Bennett?
Yeah, I was just going to comment on the rail crossings and also the train station being in Suffolk. They are two things that I think we really need to be top with the, in the transportation area. And that was something that was mentioned sometime back with the 460 project about they would not put money into Suffolk rail crossings when the trucks and all be blocked up and going through neighborhoods because of the train. So I think that's a must thing we need to do is those, stay on top of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. City Manager, would you like to speak?
Yes, if I may. Counsel, as you look through this and take a few days, if you've got any additions that you would like, please let me know, or if you want to discuss any items that we have in. in here, please let me know. The key is, as we look at some of our major transportation links, we have to look at them as we, as Mindy says, talking about federal funding, we've got to look at them as a regional asset. So going to the points that were made before, how many times the Port of Virginia was in this, things we're trying to bring in the regional aspect that will chase those federal dollars. So that's what part of the language is. The other thing is, of course, as we talk about our region and evacuation routes, it's just not what we do when we chase federal dollars. It's not a local street, but it's a regional asset that corridor that we need to be addressing.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, if I may, it's also important at the state level, right? We have to be able to make the case why we, in Suffolk, deserve funding for this project or that project when every locality across the Commonwealth is asking for funding. But it's very helpful to hear and to be aware of the sensitivities around language that we use, for sure.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? If not, I'll finish up here. Just, I attended last week, a week before last, we had a mayoral forum on violence again and we talked about some issues that we could address, some legislative issues that we could push that would help our law enforcement officers indirectly. And one of the big ones is the temporary detention orders, which we've kind of addressed here, but just to, there were actually four suggestions that came out, two of them, I think, are paramount and that we could address and also have included. And we've kind of alluded to that in here, but one of them was specifically was to request state funding to provide needed mental health resources as staff to transition TDO responsibilities away from local police officers. But this one is really important, in my mind, and that is to provide flexibility for other qualified professionals to perform TDO duties, you know, and that would have to be, I guess, legislated, that this group of individuals. And also to allow localities the opportunity to contract for these services to reduce the demands on local police forces. So not only have a means to qualify people to handle these temporary detention orders, but also to allow local governments to be able to contract for these individuals outside of using our law enforcement. And to me, that's huge. So we need to maybe elaborate on that a little bit and maybe even touch base with TPO on that. And the other we've already addressed, they've got some other things in regards to, well, technology too, that's a good one, in regards to retired law enforcement, I think we've mentioned that, provide state authorization for Virginia retirement system to allow retired law enforcement officers to perform full-time duties to address local public safeties. We do not have this one in there and I think it's probably, it'll go along with this process also from a regional standpoint. Request that priority be given to a study that evaluates the code of Virginia to determine barriers and opportunities regarding the use of technology to address violence and crime. In other words, open it up a little, ma'am. We talk about facial recognition or whatever, but there's a lot of technology out there that's questionable as to whether it can be used or not. So the idea is to be able, number one, free up our police officers, give them some latitude, be able to use, you know, what we refer to as force multipliers in regards to technology and also to look at the, they also looked at the probable cause issues, which we have in there also, to allow them to do, be a little bit more proactive in their policing, to try to get a handle on that. And I think all of those, just make sure that we're kind of on the same page with the region. And this kind of goes along with what you got, we just need to elaborate on it a little bit more. Let's see, mainly on that due to...
And if maybe while you're thinking, if I can comment on that?
Yes, please.
So we have been invited to participate in the joint HRPDC-TPO Legislative Committee and actually provided some suggestions specifically on the technology item that you just raised about barriers and opportunities and are evaluating the various kind of commissions and entities that may be best positioned to kind of take that on. And so we're very aware of the issue and are participating in those strategic discussions with our peers and with the regional contacts to try to move the ball forward. So, but I appreciate your raising it and recognizing the importance of that to the city.
And I'll just, one other comment and I'll be really brief on this because I don't want to get into it, but once again, participating in all these regional meetings, there is a process to try to get funding for roads. Sometimes it's backwards. You know, in this particular area, when it comes to smart scale funding, 45, I believe 45% of the formula is based on congestion. So you have to have a problem before you can get money for it, what it amounts to. It's hard, you know, which comes first, the chicken or the egg? So in this, in this smart scale funding, that's pretty much what it is, you know, unless you have a huge problem. We got a little bit of a traffic problem, but if it's not as big as that one or not as big as that one or not as big as this one, that's going to get priority. So the state funding, when it comes to 58 and 460, and I agree with Councilman Johnson, I mean, 58 is still going to get the bulk of the traffic, followed by 460. That's the second and third most-used gateways to Hampton Roads, period, with that traffic being generated by the port. So this possible extra, possible funding, window of funding for 460 and 58 is this federal money that's coming. And a friend of mine had dinner with Senator Warner and some, I don't even know how he got hooked up with that, but he spoke to his, I forgot what the guy's title was now.
State Director.
State Director. Because I said, you're going to go talk to who? How about mentioning, you know, we'd like some money for this? And his remark to him was, well, it can't be about Suffolk. Now, we're about Suffolk, but from a federal level and from a state level, whether you like it or not, it's not about Suffolk. It's when, at the federal level in particular, they want to get the most bang for the buck as far as the whole state is concerned. It's the same way with state funding, you know, so the economic impact has more of a sway. The fact that it is tied into the port and the port is just a port, I mean, that's where it's coming from, but the fact still remains, there's been a ton of money poured into it. And from this federal level in particular, they want to be able to say, well, we did this, we did that, and it's about the region, but we're going to benefit from it. And it's unfortunate that that's the way it is, but I will tell you, from a state and federal level, it's never going to be about one city, our city or anybody else's. That is the unfortunate reality of it. They want to see the regional impact. They want to see the congestion mitigation. They want to see the safety routes. They want to see the economic impact. And then that carries a heavier weight. So I understand what everybody's saying. I only have one concern and that's concern for the City of Suffolk, but unfortunately, that is the process because I look at it, I see it, the manager's there, it's the same thing. I am not confident that state funds are going to come close to doing the job. I mean, it's going to come from federal funds because it's a different competition for federal funds. There's more discretion, I would say, you can agree with me or not. There's a lot more discretion when it comes to the allocation of earmarks and federal funds than it is going through a system that has been implemented through the state with smart scale that puts everything on a number. And if your number's here and that number's there, guess what? It's not going to happen versus selling your case on a federal level with the discretion for them to make their own decisions lots of times. And I may be wrong, you can elaborate on that or whatever, but that's how I see it. So...
Well, the challenge, Mr. Mayor, you see when you're dealing with smart scale, for example, is that without more funding in the pie, there will be winners and losers. So to change that formula to benefit the city, our city, would be increasing the, or including the value as an evacuation route, there will be some localities across the state who will lose because that's not something that benefits them. And so our approach with transportation, it was one of the first things we did when the session concluded, was to get together with city staff and really flesh out the long list of your transportation priorities and to really try to understand those priorities, what funding we already have, where a study is needed, where engineering is needed, and then to consider strategically, where might federal funds be able to be contributed versus state funds versus other kind of avenues? And so we've been really grateful to have, you know, last year, we joined right before the session started and so didn't have the benefit of really kind of digging in, but we do have to be creative in identifying funding outside of the existing formulas and have to make the case that this project, these projects are priorities for these reasons. And how we talk about that varies depending on who we're talking to, of course, which you all know that, so.
And I'll just expand on that as well. I hope it provides some comfort to you all. We represent the City of Suffolk, so we are at your service and we will ensure that in our communications. Now, we will make great arguments as it pertains to the region and even the Commonwealth as a whole, but just keep in mind, we are having constant communications. We have meetings all the time with our legislative liaisons from other cities, which is important to keep that communication. Of course, we'll get a little competitive when it comes to the transportation side, but anyway, I just want you to keep that in mind as well. We will definitely be advocating on behalf of the City of Suffolk.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, any other questions, comments? If not, thank you very much, ladies, for your report.
Okay, we will now move to motions. We have a motion to schedule a public hearing to be held on October 19th, 2022 to receive public comment on a cable franchise agreement binding between the City of Suffolk, Virginia and Shenandoah Cable Television LLC. A motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
Councilman Williams? I get a second from Councilman Williams. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, October 19th, 2022 at 4:00 PM unless canceled, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Williams?
Motion for approval.
Motion for approval. Councilman Williams and Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we will now move to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers this evening? And if so, please explain the guidelines.
We do have non-agenda speakers this evening. Each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speakers" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Arthalia Kayhan, 302 Webb Street, representing self regarding general appreciation to the city.
Good evening, Mayor Duman and members of council. I am here this evening to publicly thank Councilman Leodis Williams and City Manager Al Moore for coming out to hear and see my concerns regarding the lack of traffic safety on Deer Road and the Mary EST's playground. They came out on one of the hottest days of the summer, if not the hottest. The speed limit is 25 miles per hour. While there, they witnessed vehicles speeding along Deer Road at the very same time that a school bus was arriving to return students home from summer school. Within a month, all-way stop signs were installed at the intersection of Hunter Street and Deer Road. Also, parking spaces were created along Deer Road at the playground. These spaces were created and are being used daily by residents living on that street and people going to the playground. With schools now being open, elementary-aged children and their parents stand at that intersection waiting on the school bus. While vehicles are stopping at the stop sign, many are still speeding until they get there. For this reason, I see a need for one additional stop sign along the stretch of Deer Road at the intersection of either Duke, Baker, or Webb Street. On another note, Pleasant Hill Cemetery is a little-known cemetery that sits at the end of Deer Road. I know exactly where it is, having loved ones, including my beloved parents, buried there. I witnessed people arriving late for a graveside service. They said, we couldn't find this place. Vice Mayor Bennett was there. I mentioned to him what I'd heard and I followed up with a phone call. To my surprise, and in little time, I saw signs on Carolina Road and County Street indicating the way to Pleasant Hill Cemetery. Thank you, Vice Mayor Bennett. I was also glad to see in your 2023 legislative agenda an item to protect and increase funding to historic African-American cemeteries. Councilman Williams, City Manager Moore, and Vice Mayor Bennett, I truly appreciate what you've done. I know it required your time and effort. Realizing that they hardly get enough thanks for the work they do, I extend a huge thanks to the employees in the Public Works Department. Additionally, I'd like to thank the firefighters of Station One on Marcus Street who took their time to correctly and securely install a car seat in my vehicle yesterday. Again, I say thank you and good night.
Our final speaker this evening is Dawn Lassiter, 200 Military Road, representing self regarding Port 460.
My name is Dawn Lassiter. I live at 200 Military Road in Suffolk. The last time that I appeared before you as an on-agenda speaker, I told you that I don't object to the Madden Companies building warehouses on Route 58 where land has already been zoned M2. I said, but I don't want warehouses so near residences, a community house, a veterinary hospital, a funeral home, and a school. They don't belong there. And I beg you to please vote no to the Port 460 rezoning request. To those of you who voted no, I offer you my heartfelt thanks, but it deeply saddens me that despite your best efforts, the land was rezoned. In the immediate aftermath of the vote, I was disappointed, disgusted, and appalled. The following morning, I was so angry that I was livid. I texted my councilman, you valued the Madden Companies' proposal more than the lives of people who will be impacted by its approval. How could you? To show such disdain for people was the ultimate act of arrogance. There was no response. For all I know, my councilman just hit delete. In the two weeks since that vote, the anger has cooled, but I'm no less disappointed or appalled or confused, no matter what reasons people give. reasons people give, whether they say, "The trucks are coming. This project will generate jobs and tax revenue," or "It will give us a leg up to get funding for the widening of 460." In my mind, there is no justification for rezoning the Williams Farm to M2. My husband told me that I'm wasting my time speaking to you. He said, "What's done is done. You're not going to change anything." That might be true, but I can't simply keep quiet and look the other way. In the last text message that I sent to my councilman, I said, quote, "When the Port 460 project warehouses are built, they will be like an open wound, a wound that will not heal," unquote. Again, there was no response. I don't know whether you fully grasp the impact of your vote, but I hope you realize it's about much more than warehouses. It's about who we are as a community, how we want to live, and what kind of legacy we want to leave to our successors. The events of this past week put everything in perspective. When Hurricane Ian hit the Gulf Coast of Florida, 150 mile-per-hour winds, heavy rains, and flooding devastated entire towns. Homes and businesses were destroyed, roads and bridges were washed out, and the people who lived in Sanibel were completely cut off from the mainland. When I saw news footage on TV, the community of Venice, where my grandmother used to live, wasn't even recognizable. A family of seven who heeded the evacuation order took refuge in a Red Cross shelter. They had nothing left but the clothes they were wearing. When interviewed by a reporter, the mother didn't complain. She said, "I'm just thankful we're alive." I don't know why hurricanes are called acts of God. God is not devastating our lives. He's protecting, sustaining, and strengthening us. Someday, when we stand before Him to be judged for the lives that we've led, there will be only two things that matter, namely our relationship with Him and how we have treated people. Ultimately, His opinion of us is the only one that counts.
That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
Okay, we'll now move to new business. Madam Clerk, are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
The following individuals have been nominated for appointment to the Agricultural Advisory Committee. Michael Ellis, as the representative for the Farm Service Area, Farm Service Agency Local Administrative Area for Whaleyville and Cypress. Double W. Michael Lane, for the Forest Industry Representative. And our last nominee is Michael A. Folk, for the Farm Service Area Agency Local Administrative, Holy Neck.
Counsel, a motion would be in order. Councilman Williams?
May I move for approval?
A motion for approval. Councilman Williams, Councilperson Bala Barlow?
Second.
Second from Councilperson Bala Barlow. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Are there any new business items that require the action of city council for consideration? Councilman Fawcett?
Yes, sir, Mayor. Thank you very much. Just briefly, I do have a motion I want to put on the table, but before I do, I just want to give a little backdrop of the story of why I'm bringing this motion forward. Some of you might remember a few years ago, I guess it's probably four or five years ago, we went in a joint venture with the City of Chesapeake in Suffolk to build the Four Lane Divided Highway on Portsmouth Boulevard. That was to help us with moving the traffic that we were going to incur that's going to go into the Chesapeake, Amazon, as well as some of the other facilities up in Northgate, in the Amazon and Northgate itself. Well, what has happened here recently is we now have quite a number of traffic, truck traffic, that's not utilized in Portsmouth Boulevard. It's more or less utilizing in Shoulders Hill. I've talked to the city manager in depth about this. We've tried to contact the Amazon. Of course, keep in mind, Amazon's not the only one. There's other trucking agencies on the north end in Northgate, as well as on Nazment Parkway. The problem with trying to get with the majority of this truck traffic going into Amazon is these are not Amazon drivers. These are drivers that have been held, being hired as owner operators. They get dispatched to pick a trailer up at a locality for Amazon, and they take it to the infill, whether it be on the Chesapeake side or the Suffolk side. Well, there's no way to control in a GPS to tell them, "They got to go this way," because they're owner operators and they're going to go, of course, the route that their GPS takes them on. So with that being said, we're getting several complaints. I know I've gotten several complaints in my area, as well as I know the vice mayor's got them over there at Suffolk Meadows. So I want to make a motion to have the Department of Public Works Traffic Engineer evaluate any impacts in banning through trucks to Shoulders Hill Road, and for the city manager to bring to city council for consideration and ordinance to ban certain through trucks on Shoulders Hill Road, Route 17, to Nazment Parkway, within the next 60 days. And with this keeping in mind, this truck traffic is coming off of 664 to 17, turning left on Shoulders Hill, and is just wearing it out. I'm encountering it many times during the day. I live on Shoulders Hill, so I know very well what I'm talking about here. You got to keep in mind, we're getting ready to a road project right there at 17 and Shoulders Hill. We cannot have 52-foot, 80,000-pound tractor trailers trying to manipulate left turns onto Shoulders Hill when they have to use the right-hand turn lane that's made for the shopping center to swing out in front of the traffic that's in the left lane to go down Shoulders Hill. So I'm asking for this to go ahead, Mr. Manager, and bring us something back, and to see what we can do to help alleviate this, to help this truck traffic go on Shoulders Hill at this particular time. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman, Vice Mayor Bennett?
I second his motion, but I just wanted to make, because I had the same conversation with people there, and they also wanted to have in that ordinance, Councilman Fawcett, in Suffolk Meadows have a high-speed zone for people that's going around the train on Duchess Way and on Duchess Way and also on Boulevard. So they would like to have a speed, high-speed part in that, on those two streets as well, as a part of the Nazment Parkway that shows the Councilman Fawcett is talking about. I'd like for that to be a part of, to be looked at and bring us something back on it.
Can that be?
Can we do that as a separate one, or should we try to include?
Like tackle those differently, or?
Want to do it separate?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, let's, um...
Let's go do yours first, then.
I second his motion.
Okay, Councilman Fawcett, would you reword your motion for the clerk's benefit and everybody else's?
We get back in here again. My memory's not that good. They motioned to have the Department of Public Works Traffic Engineering evaluate any impacts in banning through trucks on Shoulders Hill Road, and for the city manager to bring back to city council for consideration an ordinance that would ban certain through trucks on Shoulders Hill Road between Route 17 and Nazment Parkway within the next 60 days.
Okay, we get a second from Vice Mayor Bennett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, now I read the same thing from Suffolk Meadows.
Hold on one second, so I can turn your little speaker on there.
Okay.
Okay, there you go.
All right. I would like to make a motion that we would also do an ordinance for Suffolk Meadows requesting the road, Suffolk Meadows neighborhood with high speeds, road particular, Mel, Barnes Boulevard and Metro Boulevard, Suffolk Meadows Boulevard, Duchess Way being the main thoroughfare and issues of speeders, most where they're being prevented. So with that, I would like to have it where we can look at that as well, put a high speeds on in there for speeders on those two streets, Suffolk Meadows Boulevard and Barnes Boulevard.
Vice Mayor, for clarity, are you asking for a high-speed fine?
Yes.
Area?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion is to request a high-speed?
Right.
For those areas in Suffolk Meadows?
Right.
You got that, Madam Clerk? Close?
Okay.
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 Okay, so we've got a motion from Vice Mayor Bennett to request a high-speed fine in the designated areas that he mentioned in Suffolk Meadows Boulevard and?
Barnes Boulevard.
Yeah, that Barnes Boulevard. Do we have a second, Councilman Fawcett?
Yeah, I'll second his motion.
We have a second. Do we have any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, do we have any other new business that council would like to consider this evening? If not, we'll move to announcements and comments, and at this time, I'll ask Andy Franklin with the Media and Communications Relations Department to come forward with his announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, and city manager. In observance of Columbus Day and Yorktown Victory Day, Suffolk City offices will be closed Monday, October 10th, with normal operations resuming on Tuesday, October 11th. The city observes all state-designated holidays. Columbus Day and Yorktown Victory Day are considered holidays for the Commonwealth of Virginia, and all state offices are closed on this day. Suffolk Transit, the Suffolk Visitor Center, the Suffolk Seaboard Station Railroad Museum, as well as Trash and Recycling Collection, will run as normal. Harold Flats, a new apartment and commercial complex located at 130 South Saratoga Street, held its grand opening and ribbon-cutting ceremony on Thursday, September 22nd. This mixed-use renovation project underwent major historic rehabilitation after the building was heavily damaged in 2020 by a tornado that hit downtown Suffolk. The monument companies worked with the Suffolk Economic Development Authority to obtain a facade improvement grant to assist with costs associated with window and masonry repairs and replacement windows and doors. The project created 14 studio apartments, as well as approximately 500 square feet of commercial space located at the front of the building, which is currently available for lease. Located in the heart of downtown Suffolk, Harold Flats will neighbor the future Downtown Festival Event Park and the site of the brand-new library opening in 2024. The Suffolk Police Department held a very successful open house on Saturday, September 24th, at Suffolk Police Headquarters. With over 100 citizens in attendance, visitors were able to meet officers, see equipment, and get behind-the-scenes tours of the police department. The Kings Fork High School Watchdog Program is a collaboration between the Suffolk Police Department Resource Officers, Suffolk Public Schools, and Kings Forks High School students. The program teaches students the power and responsibility of peer-to-peer accountability to foster a good, healthy, and safe school environment. Students have raised money for breast cancer awareness, volunteered with the Boys and Girls Club, assisted with handing out turkeys at the LW Annual Turkey Drive, and much more. Most recently, club members sent cards and a floral arrangement recognizing the victims killed at Robb Elementary School in Uvalde, Texas. On Saturday, October 5th, Bennetts Creek Park will transform into a carpool cinema. Bring your family and friends to view The Addams Family, rated PG. Watch the movie from your car and tune in on your radio, or bring a chair and watch from the lawn. The park will open at 6:00 PM, and the movie will start at approximately 7:15 PM. This event is free and open to the public. Food can be purchased on-site at Ryan's Steaks and Cakes and Mike's Italian Ice Popcorn and Cuddle Corn. For more information, contact Chelsea Morgan at 514-7267. Suffolk Parks and Recreation is hosting a family two-mile fun run-walk at Lake Mead Trail, located at 201 Holly Lawn Parkway, on Saturday, October 15th, at 11:00 AM. Various vendors will be on hand, as well as exhibits from the Suffolk First Responders. The run-walk is an excellent opportunity for the entire family to enjoy the cooler weather and beautiful views along the trail at Lake Mead. Donations will be accepted at the event for the National Breast Cancer Foundation in observance of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. For more information, contact Melissa Crook at 514-4504. Mark your calendars. Our friends at Suffolk Parks and Recreation are hosting Fright Night on Saturday, October 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Fun for the whole family. The event will have candy, a haunted house, bounce houses, face painting, fall games, and much more. The event will be conveniently held at three locations throughout the city on the same night. Locations include the East Suffolk Recreation Center at 138 South Sixth Street, the Creekside Recreation Center at 1,000 Bennetts Creek Road, and the Curtis R. Milteer Senior Recreation Center at 132 Robertson Street in Whaleyville. Thank you to everyone who voted in the Suffolk News Herald 2022 Locals Choice Awards. We are honored to have received three first-place awards for our Lake Mead Park, Suffolk Art Gallery, and the East Suffolk Recreation Center Fitness Specialist, Melissa Crooks. We also snagged a few other awards, including Silver Award for Best Local Park or Playground for Sleepy Hole Park, the finalist award for Best Local Park or Playground for Lone Star Lakes, and the Silver Award in Best Art Exhibit for our Suffolk Art Gallery. And more congratulations for the City of Suffolk Parks and Recreation Department, which recently achieved reaccreditation at the National Recreation and Park Association Annual Conference. The department first achieved accreditation in 2017, and to maintain their accreditation, they must undergo a reaccreditation process every five years. The initial accreditation process required department staff to provide evidence of meeting 154 standards across multiple categories. In comparison, only 148 standards are required to achieve reaccreditation. Suffolk Parks and Recreation, however, again met all 154. Suffolk Parks and Recreation is one of only 199 accredited agencies in the entire country. The City of Suffolk Public Works Department has developed a resilience plan to meet the requirements of the Department of Conservation and Recreation Community Flood Preparedness Fund Grant Program. The plan includes a review of the entire city to identify flood prevention and protection projects. The city is seeking input from citizens during this two-week public comment period to allow citizens to review the draft resilience plan and provide comments or suggestions before adoption of the final plan. To view the draft resilience plan and provide comment, please visit SuffolkVA.us/resilience or contact Heather Baggett, environmental specialist, at 514-7627. The period for public comments is open until October 14th. We have two cleanups to remind you about tonight. First off, we have the previously rescheduled land and water-based cleanup on and around the Nazment River that will take place this Saturday, October 8th, from 9:00 AM to noon. Litter gathering equipment will be provided. Land-based volunteers will meet at the Suffolk Shopping Center parking lot between Belk and Burger King, while those wanting to clean from their kayak or canoe will meet at Constance Wharf Park in Marina. Does litter haunt you? Do you need another reason to put on this year's Halloween costume? Then Keep Suffolk Beautiful's Halloween Cleanup is for you. This costume cleanup takes place on October 22nd from 4 until 6:00 PM. Participants will meet outside the Nazment Brewing Station, located at 212 East Washington Street, to sign in and receive equipment. Prizes for the most scary, original, and environmentally-friendly costume will be awarded after the event. Volunteers are encouraged to enjoy refreshments at the brewery or a meal at one of several nearby establishments. For more information, contact Litter Control at 514-7604, and be sure to follow Keep Suffolk Beautiful on Facebook and Instagram. Residents with questions about the vaccination process or needing assistance are encouraged to contact the Vaccinate Virginia statewide call center at 877-829-4682, Monday through Friday, between 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM. More information can be found at VaccineFinder.org or Vaccinate.Virginia.gov. or vaccinate.virginia.gov. We'll end tonight with a heartwarming story courtesy of our Public Works Department. On Friday, September 23rd, Suffolk Public Works received a call from a resident that his elderly dog, Sweet Pea, had made her way into a driveway pipe and got stuck due to sediment blockage. City of Suffolk Public Works staff members Morris Jackson and Joe Arrowood quickly arrived on the scene with shovels and other hand tools to help get her up. Morris and Joe quickly dug into the pipe access to give Sweet Pea a clear path out of her predicament. Scared and shaking, Sweet Pea made her way out of the pipe unscathed and into the arms of her grateful owner. If your ditch or driveway pipes need cleaning, you can call Suffolk Public Works at 514-7600 for assistance. With that, we'll leave you with all the ways residents, as well as business owners, can receive the latest information from the City of Suffolk. We're available on popular social media channels, through our website, the city's municipal channel, and the city's e-newsletter, which you can sign up for on our website, SuffolkVA.us. And of course, residents are encouraged to reach out to the city switchboard at 514-4000 to be connected to city services. Have a good night.
Okay, we'll now move on to announcements from council. Councilman Williams? Let me get you hooked up there. Bam.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be brief tonight. First, I'd like to thank Ms. Kayhan for coming out. You know, we very seldom have people come up and thank us for some of the good deeds or some of the things that, you know, council have done and staff have done, and that was welcoming for, to have someone to come up and actually let the public know how much they appreciate the things that we do. Because everyone up here, they, they go above and beyond to try to be the voice for their constituents, and I just want to thank her for coming up. Also, I'd like to thank Robert Lewis and his staff. Thank you for getting that bridge open, so I can stop getting calls. And I know you say it's not completely finished, however, it's open. That's the main thing, and thank you. Thank you for making that happen. Also, Mr. City Manager, the 400 block of Webb Street, I don't know where the potholes came from all of a sudden. I don't think they was there last week, but they're there today. And I mean, they just, the 400 block of Webb Street needs some attention. Like I said, there's, there's, I know I, I hit a couple of them because I go through there every day. So if you could get someone to just take a look at that. My word for the month is obedient, complying or willing to comply with orders or requests, submissive to another's will. And with that, I'd like to say good night.
Councilman Goldberg.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. One, Robert Lewis, I'd like to thank you for the bridge. Also, I'd received calls from a number of people that were going throughout to the, Out of Banks, I do believe that was the route, and they, I think will be very glad to have that open. I think our legislative agenda is a very good one, and I thought the team that presented them tonight would do a good job for us. I thought that was great. And also, I want to commend the gentleman with Public Works to getting Sweet Pea out of that pipe. When I saw that and heard that, my heart just jumped. You know, that is a great sign of, of hard-working Public Works people that, that we have and the people, the employees that we have in this city, and I want to commend them for their effort and what they did. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Ward?
Yes, I just wanted to mention that being Councilman Williams attended VML in Richmond, we had a great time and talking about the city of Suffolk and some of the things. We learned what's going, coming down the pipe, and we always have a good time talking to the other elected officials. Also think the legislative agenda was pretty, pretty well-done. I like some of the things they're doing, especially about the African-American cemeteries. I think that is, is laser-heavy on my heart to see that. Some of the cemeteries what I have seen around the city of Suffolk, so I hope things work out. We get much money as possible we can get to improve some of that. Did I say God bless?
Councilperson Butler Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say I hope everybody comes out for Peanut Fest. Looking forward to it. Looks like the weather's going to be great, and I'm sorry the parade got canceled, but glad everything else is on and looking forward to it. Like I said, the weather looks like it's, it should be great. The weather for harvest has not been great. Just shout out to all my fellow farmers, the four inches of rain that we got last Friday. Glad it wasn't any worse, but we wish we could have spread it out over August instead of getting it all at once in September. But glad it wasn't worse and hope everybody is back doing what they need to do as soon as possible, and to the rest of the citizens, be cautious and give us a minute. We'll get out of your way as soon as we can. I want to express my thanks on behalf of the Barlow family. I've received a lot of calls, texts, emails with condolences on the passing of Delegate Bill Barlow, our Uncle Billy K. And I just appreciate everybody's thoughts and sentiments. He was a good person and led a good life, and he'll be sorely missed by everybody in the family. So wanted to thank everybody for their expressions and appreciate that. And with that, I'll say good night.
Councilman Johnson?
I'm sorry. I'll try to be brief as well. I did want to say congratulations to Parks and Rec for the accreditation. I was a little late coming in, but we're always proud of our Parks and Rec people. They do a great job. And sadly, I remember five years ago when they got it. We're just getting older and older. It's all good. I'd also like to thank the Suffolk Pilot Club for having the Queen's Dinner the other night for the Peanut Fest. They did an outstanding job. It was a wonderful event, and I thank everyone there. And to the young lady, who I didn't write her name down, but the young lady knows who she is, who is our Peanut Fest queen, congratulations. And to the other girls in the court as well, they were very, very impressive. Attendant Lake Prince Woods Senior Living Center is getting ready to build a new wellness center and art studio. I have a family member there now, and I'm just so pleased to see that facility continue to expand and do such amazing things for our city. It was a wonderful opening they had, and I'm so pleased to have them in our city. We have two people that work for this city that just got married, Deana Holt and Jason Tremier. They don't know I'm saying that, but congratulations. We are so pleased that you both work for us. Whether nobody else does it or not, I'm gonna say it. Kevin Hughes has a new baby girl. It's amazing. I didn't know he was expecting another child, but it's wonderful. So Kevin, wherever you are, hopefully you're sleeping. Best of luck. We're proud of you. I'd like to recognize Piney Grove Baptist Church on Deer Path Road out there in my borough. They're 150 years strong this Sunday, so big service going on. If anybody is out that way, stop by. I'd like to also welcome Mr. Falk to the Ag Council. We're so excited to have a new member that is a wonderful addition. Thank you to Chief of Police. We have police cars on 58, and I'm so pleased. I mean, every, it's been a really, really, and they are so busy pulling people. It's a good thing, and hopefully we can keep, keep them out there. I'd also like to thank Councilman Ward and Councilman Williams for attending VML. We appreciate you going there and representing all of us. That was very nice. And with that, I'll simply say good night.
Councilman Fawcett?
I haven't had a lot to say, so tonight I'm gonna fill in a lot. First off, I'd like to again extend my condolences to the Barlow family again for your loss. Also, I did go out to Lake Prince Woods, the groundbreaking with Councilman Johnson and the mayor. A very, very nice place, very beautiful setting out there, and the people are just wonderful. And the new facility they're gonna build is just great. It's gonna be fantastic. This is something that was brought up earlier tonight. We had a Fire Prevention Week proclamation. This is dear to me because that was my background for a long, long time, and I can't tell you that fire prevention is an everyday event, not just Fire Prevention Week. Do not wait until you hear your smoke detector battery beeping to change the battery if you have a smoke detector in your home. This is the time to kind of recheck yourself. Also, do your carbon monoxide detectors. If you probably are listening to the news this past week when all this hurricane stuff was going on, these people had their generators running with trying to get power and all, and guess what? The majority of the calls were carbon monoxide poisoning. They probably did a lot of people in. So please, please check those. It's too late. It's too late when you smell it or you see it. It's probably gonna get you. Suffolk News Herald building, myself, Mr. Goldberg went out. They did a great job on that building, putting that building together, making some nice little apartments in there. That's, that's gonna be a great little spot for someone to hang out. Good spot. The Queen's Bank was great. I think, as Tim said, it was a good crowd. Mayor Dumas did a good job in seeing it that night. Appreciate it, Mike. And congratulations to the young lady that won the Queen's. She, she did a good job. That was great. And all her, her essay was based on the military, the Navy. Her grandfather, parents and all were in the Navy. Kevin and the mom, congratulations on your newborn child, another girl. That's two girls, Kevin, two girls. So anyway, we appreciate that. The legislative agenda, these legislative agendas, they get harder every year. They're not gonna get any easier. Things are getting tighter and tighter, so we're gonna have to have our legislative agenda folks work hard for us to get some of the things that we really need, and hopefully we can get some of them. But we're just one city in a big Commonwealth that's all in there, bartering for the same things. I want to say thanks to all our city employees for doing a good job every day that they do. And remember, this weekend is Peanut Fest weekend. Come out to the, you know, to the festival. It's supposed to be great weather. Starts tomorrow, runs through Sunday. We also have the Shrimp Feast that we'll be working on tomorrow, and we'll be serving on Friday. Get your tickets. There'll be no tickets at the gate, so if you miss, you miss. So come on out. With that, I'd like to say thank you to each council member tonight. It was a good meeting, and I hope to see you in the next meeting. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Bennett?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple more requests. I just saw an email, this manager from Suffolk Meadows. We were talking about truck traffic coming out of Northgate Industrial Park, and we were questioning that a sign be put so they would know that truck traffic should turn right to go to 664. So there's nothing telling them truck traffic is not welcome on Shoal Zero Road. So I'd like to see if we couldn't get that part of looking at getting a sign there, instructing trucks that don't know that 664 is to the right and they should be turning on Portwood Boulevard. And they are saying that on Shoal Zero Road right there at the entrance of Suffolk Meadows East, Suffolk could put a sign, the city put a sign up telling the direction into the industrial park for trucks. So we need to look at that. If we have a sign there directing them on Shoal Zero Road going to the industrial park. So I'd appreciate that. Someone taking a look at that. Also, I attended the Queen Luncheon, and it was great. All the participants were great, and there's a lot of activity going on there, and I think all of them did a great job with their performance. And all the ladies that was there, that was modeling and stuff, they did a great job. So I have my wife who were with me, so I didn't have to buy anything. So, and I also attended the Somerton Friends Quaker on Quaconect, 350-year anniversary, and that was worthwhile. That was a great turnout that day. I was out there. I was out on that Saturday, and the speakers was great, and a lot of history was given there. And I'll tell you, if people don't know some of the history of the Quakers, they need to go out there and talk to some of the people that are members of that church. And so a lot of information there that I think would be beneficial to people knowing that, what life was back, some years back, and what they did to help others. And we've covered everything else, I think, that I had on my notes earlier. So I would just say that I hope that everyone have a great week, and we look forward to next week and maybe be a little bit better than this week. And I'll say good evening.
Okay, I'll go ahead and wrap it up, and I'll be brief as possible. We had some amazing performances by the Keith Ballet towards the end of the month, September 22nd. I mean, at the Cultural Center for the Arts, truly a feather in the cap of Suffolk. I want to thank Suffolk Cultural Arts Center, their board, and all their employees for making that happen. Much Strut was very successful last Saturday. Everybody's mentioned the Queen's Banquet, and I did a little bit of research, so I'm gonna help you out. The Peanut Fest queen is Taylor Rockett, R-O-C-K-E-T-T. I'm gonna tell you what schools they're from. And the court is Paige Henry, Emma Rotzler, Anna Gomer, Gabriella Federici, and Kendall Legg. So everybody, everybody got mentioned. Lake Prince Woods, you know, that got mentioned several times. Their 20th anniversary, it's hard to believe. They've been there 20 years. I mean, I just lived down the street from there, and I say, I remember the first time that they started to grade for a road. Truly a, a great asset in our city. I was invited to bring greetings for the city at a Knights of Pythias, 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 excuse me, Pythias, not Pythias. Knights of Pythias meeting at the Cultural Arts Center. It was a regional event. To be honest with you, I had to do a little bit of research because I wasn't exactly sure who the Knights of Pythias were. I thought it was a Netflix show, so I turned it on. I tried to search Knights of Pythias, but it didn't come up. But great, great group, and they chose Suffolk to have their statewide convention. We talked about employees. I want to, well, these are, these are two employees from the Commissioner of Revenue's office. I had a constituent and a customer come by this morning and said that they'd had an issue, a tax issue with the Commissioner of Revenue, and they went down there and, please mention these two young ladies' names, because they were very helpful and professional, and I told them I would do that. It's Kathleen Ray and Shewana Ivy, and I hope I pronounced her name right, and that's in the Commissioner of Revenue's office. Susan Draper is the Commissioner, so thank you for looking out for our citizens, as I know you do all the time. Shrimp Feast kicks off Peanut Fest Friday. There are still some tickets available. We got them at the dealership, and there's a few other places around town. There's none that are gonna be sold at the gate, and they are getting real close to being sold out. It's the best deal, best deal in town. All the shrimp you can eat, all the beer you can drink, all the libations you can handle within reason, because we will have police presence there. Make sure everybody gets home okay. So keep that in mind. Also, we discussed the legislative agenda. There's a lot on there. There's a lot of good things on there, a lot of things we need to work with our regional partners as well, because we're on the same page. And with that, I will go to my quote of the night before I ask for adjournment, and that quote is from Ralph Waldo Emerson, who needs probably no introduction, who passed away April 27th of 1882. And that is, and I quote, "What lies behind you and what lies in front of you pales in comparison to what lies inside of you." And with that, I will say good night and ask for a motion for adjournment. Councilman Fawcett?
Could I make one comment, please?
And Vice Mayor would like to make one more comment.
One more comment. I had, thought I had a note. I just wanted to recognize and thank the police chief and the police department for King Falk Watchdog Program. Was recognized by the governor for a great job bringing students and police together. I just wanted to mention that. I had that note here, and, I'm sorry, I apologize for that.
That's all right. We got, I think we had a motion for adjournment and adjournment from Councilman Fawcett, and I'm going to recognize Councilman Williams.
Second it.
For a second. Do we have any discussion of the motion? No discussion? Anyone want to think about it? Okay. Council members, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned. This meeting stands adjourned.